That CED has started way back when, I think nine, I think this was our ninth year. We had twenty-five businesses participate, including twenty-four brag tag stops and then a business who participated in the prize pack but didn't have a stop. We gave out one hundred and seventy-nine prize packs. So those are the number of kids that completed the whole program. But our numbers tell us that we had three hundred to four hundred kids participate based on the number of rag tags we picked up from the businesses. Lots of good feedback. And this was the first year we had a presenting sponsor, which was Fred Meyer. So we're very grateful to them to helping support the program and allowing us to do more things than we have been able to do in the past. I've been meeting a lot with prospective members at our, both our happy hours and our luncheons. We've had a lot of guests and every time we have a guest, I invite them out for coffee. And most of them say yes, and most of them join afterwards. So I'm really excited about that. So we are growing. In September, we had two Good Work Fund contributions. We gave five hundred dollars to the storehouse on behalf of the Mayor's Day of Concern. And we gave two hundred dollars to Walls of Books, which they matched to buy books for kids. We hosted our first free networking breakfast since I've been there. I understand we used to do it a long time ago. At La Quinta in Auburn, who's a Chamber member, we had thirty-eight attendees. People were really excited about the time of day. They said they like, they like coming during the, during the workday. It's easier for some of them to get to us. And then afterward, for example, but that went really well. Then we had a happy hour at Vineyard Park for the first time. At the end of the month, I was able to go to the Urban Business Support graduation. So Urban Business Support is one of our members. They are a nonprofit that supports business entrepreneurs that might not otherwise get support. So they have a ten-week entrepreneurship program. And this was their graduation. It turned out that two of our members actually were going through that program, and I didn't know about that. So that was really fun. We're able to be a part of that. We're going to have them come speak at our November luncheon to tell us more about the program so more people know about it. And we are going to, in honor of the graduates, we're going to give five hundred dollars from our Good Work Fund contribution to help the program continue. In October, we had our Covington Makers Market. So excited about this. This was our fifth event. And I'm very proud to say that we had more than double our num- the number of vendors, not vendors, excuse me, attendees. So by the numbers, we had sixty vendors. I think we had forty or fifty at the last one. We had ten partners and sponsors, three entertainers. We decorated two hundred mini pumpkins. We had more than eleven hundred people attend. So super excited that the, the community loves coming out. We do it for a lot of different reasons, primarily to support small businesses that wouldn't normally belong to a chamber, but also because it's important to get the community out, to give them an opportunity to see what Covington's all about. And I want them to look at their calendar and see, hey, what's going on in Covington before they decide to go to another city between Covington Days and Kids Fest and Movies in the Park and Covington Makers Market. We want families to know that there's a lot to do in Covington. We recently joined the Greater Seattle Business Association. We will soon be joining the Washington Retail Association. So these are reciprocal memberships. So they will also be members of ours. What's the benefit to that? It gives us lots of extra resources, assets, and benefits for our members. So excited to kind of grow the chamber in that way also. As of today, we have a hundred and sixty-six members compared to a hundred and fifty-five, or excuse me, a hundred and fifty-three this time last year. That includes the annual churn that we usually have every calendar year. And we've added thirty new members so far this year. And I'm not done yet. I've got twelve more to meet my goal, and I might even exceed that goal with any luck. So overall impressions, we have a lot of momentum going on right now. I am so excited that we have excellent attendance. People are referring us. And I would say I probably get three referrals to possible members every single week, and I try to meet with every single one. We're already starting to sign up sponsors and speakers for 2024. People want to sign up to sponsor a luncheon. Or we've already had a vendor that's like, I want to sign up for your next market, but we're still working on a date for that. Covington Makers Market was a huge hit. You may have seen the pictures on Facebook. I want to give a shout, shout out to our administrative and event coordinator, Kylana Temiosa. She's been with us for six months, but we first met her as a vendor at our very first market, and she killed it. She, she probably did eighty percent of the work, and she is just amazing. She did everything with a smile on her face, super organized, looked at it from a vendor perspective, but also from the chamber perspective, what is good for, for both parties. So I'm really, really grateful to have her on staff, but also to have her help with Makers Market. It wouldn't have been as successful without her. We're in a good, solid financial position as we head into renewals for our calendar year members. We're already starting to plan for the next legislative session with CLTV, which is Southeast Area Legislative Transportation Coalition. And SSCCLC, which is South Sound Chambers of Commerce Legislative Coalition. So we're starting to talk about what our legislative priorities might be next year. We'll also be announcing some new benefits, member benefits soon to add to our value proposition. Some of those will include some very special benefits from Washington Retail Association that apply to businesses, even if they're not retailers. So I'm really excited to, to share that soon. Coming up next, we have a luncheon on Thursday. It's our monthly networking luncheon on the second Tuesday of each month. And this, uh, this time we will be speaking about Septed and Public Safety with the chief, Selena Lyons from Community Development and Tony from Planning. Let's see, what else is going on? We have third Thursday Happy Hour next week at The Rock, and we will be doing a, a costume contest. So if you're, if you're interested in coming in costume, or we'll have some extra, we'll have some, uh, extra prizes for that. And I also want to share one last thing. Um, our website has a community calendar. So anybody that's hosting something in the community, whether it's, you know, a rotary function or a civic function or a city event, um, you're welcome to post it on our website. You just go to the calendar, click Submit an Event. It comes to us for approval and it's live. And we're having people from all around South King County send us things or, um, post directly to the calendar. So that's a good way for the community to know who we are and what we're about, and an easy way for them to update the calendar and let us know what's going on. I'd be happy to answer any questions. If anybody's got anything.
Questions for Dana?
Thank you as always for your support. Uh, we couldn't do this without you. The city is a great partner for us, and we really appreciate you.
On the Makers Market was outstanding. So good job. Thank you. All right, Dana, thank you very much. Appreciate all the hard work that you and the Chamber are doing in our community.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is our first of two public comment periods. Speakers will state their name, address, and organization. Comments are directed to the City Council, not the audience or staff. Comments are not intended for conversation or debate and are limited to no more than four minutes per speaker. For attendees participating virtually, click the Raise Hand button in Zoom. For attendees, thank you, Joe. For attendees participating by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand. Once the city grants you permission to speak, press unmute if participating virtually, or dial star six to unmute if participating by phone. Notice to all participants pursuant to state law, RCW forty-two dot one seven A dot five five five. Campaigning for any ballot measure or candidate in City Hall and/or during any portion of the council meeting, including the audience comment portion of the meeting, is prohibited. With that, we will start. Dana, did you have anything else you wanted to speak? Katrina, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Wagner and Council. It's great to be back here to see you again. I wanted to give you an update at the urging of several Covington residents who have talked to me and also just myself. I wanted to give you an update on my favorite hot topic. Um, some things interesting that have happened with fireworks since I've last seen you. Last spring, I've been working with several cities. The city of Sea-Tac was doing much as I've done with you. They've been talking and debating about the idea of a modified fireworks ban because some of their residents had asked for that as well. Uh, the Fire Marshal of the Puget Sound Regional Fire Authority came to a Sea-Tac meeting last spring and did a PowerPoint presentation. The first slide, other than the title slide, the first slide said goal to allow the purchase, possession, and sale of certain allowable fireworks in the city. That was the Fire Marshal's goal. And he went through a PowerPoint with Sea-Tac, explained very clearly which fireworks should continue to be illegal, which ones were illegal statewide, which ones he thinks should be illegal consumer-wise. And then he showed which ones he felt should be legal under a modified ban. And he talked about why those should be legal and why they don't cause the problems that people that are concerned with fireworks talk about, the noise, the danger, the fires. He talked about how these do not do any of those things that people are concerned about. So he did a very wonderful, clear presentation, and the city of Sea-Tac ended up unanimously voting to approve the modified fireworks ban. We also did some research on the legislation, um, because the question of do you have to wait a year or don't you? And the interpretation I received was the purpose of that law is so that you can't pull the rug out from under a nonprofit who is budgeted. So if you're going more loose, even though a modified ban is not the state rule, the spirit of the law is that you can do that without a year's waiting period. But if you were tightening it, so that again, you don't take away a nonprofit's budget or a fireworks company who's ordered. So anyway, Sea-Tac went with that interpretation. They opened this summer with a modified ban. They had four sites, had a fabulous Fourth of July season with no issues, and thousands of dollars were raised for nonprofits. Tuck Willa was in their second year of this modified ban and also again had a second successful year. The, as I've mentioned before, the officials in Tuck Willa have said, please share that we will talk to anybody. So council members, if you would like to talk to the council member that was the council president, when they modified, uh, modified their ban, his name is Tom McLeod. He would love to talk to you. Mayor Eckberg would love to talk. The police chief, Dreever, has said he'd be happy to share just because they've seen so many positive results from this modified ban. I'm here because I'm absolutely passionate about helping nonprofits and helping communities find peace around this time. There's just so much dissension. I'm working with several cities in a similar way. And one of the things that Fire Marshal, the Fire Marshal said that really caught my attention as we talked afterwards, he would love to see the Puget Sound Regional Fire Authority, which is now Tuck Willa, Sea-Tac, Covington, Kent, and Maple Valley. He would love it if they were all on the same. Because right now it's split in terms of legislation. So I know he would love to talk with you. If you had any interest in pursuing this, I just, you know, I've looked, I've researched, I've talked to communities. Back when everything was legal, we know that just was not effective. It was tough. And then in the nineties, the bans came into place. And people are now saying, you know what? That didn't work as well either. And the modified ban has the data and it's increasing. Kennewick in Eastern Washington came on board this summer with a modified ban. I don't have as concrete of data from them. I would love to continue working with you all. I feel passionate about it. I enjoy coming out here. I felt like I was coming home. So thank you as always for listening and please call me. I'd love to bring the Fire Marshal out if that would help.
Thank you, Katrina. Next is Dan Luer. Welcome.
Thank you. Dan Luer, twenty-five-year resident of Covington. I'm here, Reagan. You probably know him out like Bad Panic, you turn it up. Mayor, I've talked to Elizabeth about this, but my concern is that if CCR enforcement code, which I know you're doing. But my ask is, is there anyone, when you say it takes a lot of time, we're talking a lot of times. Well, after a year and a half, I've, someone down there, they actually moved two cars. It took almost a year and a half to get that much done. My point is, is that, well, people don't, they don't fear the law or the, or, or playing by the rules and they continue to pile on. The one guy at the corner likes to play a shell game with cars. There's, there's, I think there's eleven there right now when I drive by. And you've been playing with this guy for many years. My ask is, is there any way we can, why does it take so long? And can we expedite this process? Because it looks like we're not doing anything. And I had a bunch of the neighbors we're going to come with, but they didn't come because they don't think anything's going to change. So that they, they don't have any confidence that it will be any different. I actually looked into that one place that was King County and gave me the information for that. That's like three, four weeks ago, which has nothing to do with here. I went, I did all the protocols. I went through all the things. I didn't get it. Thank you. I'll look into it. I got nothing. So it's like, it's like, people don't care about that. But, but those of us that live in that, that community over there, I've been there since nineteen ninety, and I'm watching it just slowly, slowly disintegrate. And across from where you live on the other, other street, it, it's, it's really getting bad. And I'm, 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 we're embarrassed to have neighbor, our friends come to our homes. Property values, it's a really big deal for a lot of us, you know, but most people don't want to say anything, but I will. And I know Brianna will. But, um, yeah, I'm just asking for anything you guys can do to try to expedite that stuff, you know? Mr. Shell game up there, that's, he's just playing cat and mouse with you. And that's just ridiculous that they could even do that. And it hurts my heart that we have to live like that. And drive by there every day looking at all this stuff. But after a year and a half, two cars got moved. And I take that back a little bit ago. One guy took one car off of Jax. But if you drive down that whole direct, the street I'm talking about, there's no shortage of stuff to look at. This, this is an eyesore, you know, and it brings us all down. That's all I got.
Dan, thank you very much for your comments. Really appreciate your passion and continuing to push on it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Brianna? Can I call you Bree?
Sure. I'm just going to reiterate what Dan's saying. Um, we've lived out here for twenty years now. Raised two children in the schools and the community and the neighborhood. I've worked locally for quite a number of years as well. The house that Dan's referring to that moves cars, I know that that's been an issue for over twenty-five years. Just because I have many community connections and people that have lived here and grew up knowing that stuff. Just the feedback is like Dan is saying, a lot of our neighbors just didn't want to come tonight because they felt like it's always been that way. And there hasn't been significant enough progress that we can see. So we're just asking for more support with either code enforcement or just reiterating to those community members that live in those dwellings, you know, to just follow the laws and the codes. Because those of us that do, we get really frustrated. We're looking to hopefully get out of Covington. I have lots of people and friends that still live and work in Covington that hate it. Because they just, one, don't feel safe. Two, it just feels dirty, no matter where they're at. Most of those people that are, we're all talking about moving are all in our neighborhood. Had a lot of time lately to take a lot of time through the neighborhoods during the day and afternoon. Um, there's a lot of houses that have a lot of stuff. It's not my business. It's not our business, but it just feels like we're not being paid attention to. I know that new property, hotels, new retail apartments, that's all shiny. And I know that that gets a lot of attention. And I know that brings in a lot of revenue for the city. We're not saying we don't support it, but we're just saying, don't forget the people in the middle because you have people on one side of the town that may have higher valued homes that may get listened to. And then the other side of the town where we're bringing all the new retail and everything, we understand that, you know, growth is most of the time, you know, necessary. Uh, but those of us in the middle just feel like there's just not enough engagement, I guess, with the rest of the community to just kind of keep their areas nice and clean. But it does bring in rodents. We've had issues in our neighborhood. Um, and it does bring in unsafe conditions. There's a lot of people that work until the middle of the night and they come home. They don't feel safe going into their own homes from their driveway. Just when you see people that have junk and multiple cars and broken out windows or whatever it is, when you see that, it's not a bright, shiny city. Um, your neighborhoods are kind of the backbone. And those of us that have lived here for a very, very long time just feel like it's just not important. Because we're not brand new, and we're not shiny, and we don't bring enough revenue to really kind of get anybody's attention. So that's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you for speaking tonight, Brianna. That is all I have on our sign-in sheet. Is there anybody else in the audience wishing to address council tonight? Is there anybody online wishing to address council? Please raise your hand. Seeing nobody raise their hand, nobody else to address council, we will have a second opportunity for public comment towards the end of our meeting. Thank you. Next is approval of the consent agenda, items C one through C five. Have a motion to approve?
So moved.
The second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent agenda has been approved. Next up is new business, item number one, consider appointments to the Equity Cultural and Social Justice Commission. Does council wish to take action tonight? We interviewed three people tonight. Anybody wish to take action? Please raise your hand.
Okay. I move to appoint Romel Marquez to the fill position six on the Equity Cultural and Social Justice Commission with a term expiring September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
Do we have a second?
I second.
It's been moved and seconded to appoint Romel to fill position number six on the Equity Cultural and Social Justice Commission with a term expiring September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five. Beth, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yeah, I, I really appreciated his, um, his candor and some of his answers and talking about the commission and its, its journey, um, since it's fairly new commission and trying to work through the bumps. And I think the, as, as members on that commission typically do, looking, looking at all of our community and city issues through an equity lens and continuing to have that, um, be a focus moving forward as we build this community, as the Covington grows, so.
Thank you, Beth. Jennifer, would you like to speak to your second?
Yes, um, I appreciate, uh, Romel's longevity on the commission. I know it is a newer commission, as Beth stated. However, you know, we have a core three that have stuck with it. And, you know, he mentioned their work on the long-term work plan as one of their major accomplishments. And I completely agree with that. That has really pulled the commission together for focus. He also mentioned, um, the most important function is, is ensuring that everyone that comes to Covington, um, doesn't have to worry about equity issues and that they're included in the community. And yes, that's an absolute fact and, and something we should support. And I look forward to Romel's continued contributions.
Is there anybody else wishing to speak for or against the motion? All right, it's been moved and seconded to appoint Romel to fill position number six on the Equity Cultural and Social Justice Commission with a term expiring September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, Romel. Uh, does council wish to take any further action tonight?
Uh, I move to appoint Chuck. Just go with Chuck. I can't say his last name. Sorry. Johnny, thank you, uh, to fill position number seven on the ECSJ with a term expiring September thirtieth, uh, twenty twenty-five.
Do we have a second? Thank you, Sean. It's been moved and seconded to appoint Chuck Ajadi to fill position number seven on the Equity Cultural and Social Justice Commission with a term expiring September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five. Joe, would you like to speak to your motion?
I love Chuck for, for no other reason than the energy he brings. He is passionate and you could tell he's passionate about his family, his neighbors, his community, and just working with everybody. But the underlying thing I always hear from him is community, community, community. And that's what he wants to build is community. And that's what the goal of this commission is, is to build community. I may not always agree with what's said. But as we'll talk later, one of the other commissioners said, that's fine. If you don't agree, you're listening, you're respecting how we, how, what we're saying. And that's what Chuck's doing is I want to build community. You're talking with you, you're building up this, this group of people who just so happen to live in this, this area. And that's, I think, important for this city as a whole is to build community. And I think Chuck has some amazing ideas, and that's why he's still here because he, it's like I have work that's not finished yet and I want to finish it. So I will always support Chuck and this, on these aspects.
Thank you, Joe. Sean, would you like to speak to your second?
Uh, yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll just add, um, I think Joe hit it pretty well that, um, Chuck brings and has a kind of a different perspective on our community and reminded us that not everyone is plugged in and online and that there may need to be additional communications tools developed to reach community members that aren't, uh, as connected as all of us are. And I like that kind of thinking, even adds some ideas on how we might develop that. So, um, so I'm going to support Chuck's nomination.
Thank you, Sean. Is there anybody else wishing to speak for or against the motion? Beth?
I think one of the other comments that he, he brought up is that, that we don't have communities without face-to-face connections. And so it's as much about getting people out and having neighbors, helping neighbors, having neighbors and, you know, other, whether it's a city or council or churches, other groups getting out and trying to just build those connections that, that actually really make a community, a community, not just.
Thank you, Beth. Anybody else wishing to speak for or against the motion? It's been moved and seconded to appoint Chuck to fill position number seven on the Equity Cultural and Social Justice Commission with a term expiring September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, Chuck. Uh, we have a third position. Council wish to take action.
I move to appoint David Scalabrini to fill position number eight on the ECSJ with the term expiring September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
I second that.
It's been moved and seconded to appoint David Scalabrini to fill position number eight on the Equity Cultural and Social Justice Commission with a term expiring September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five. Joe, would you like to speak to your motion?
Uh, I'm going to go back a few steps and say, you know, Chuck was talking about community. But we don't build community without being at the table. And David wants to bring everyone to the table to hear what they all have to say. It doesn't matter where you fall on whatever political spectrum, uh, you know, family spectrum, whatever spectrum you fall on, he wants you at the table. He wants to hear from you, but he wants you to be respectful. And that is something I think we all agree with. That's something we all strive to do up here, is be respectful of everyone's opinions, everyone's thoughts, everyone's comments. And you can't have that community that Chuck wants to build without having the people at the table being respectful and listening and having respectful conversation. Agreeing to disagree, agreeing to agree, or any of that, without all of that. Because that is, and that's what David was talking about in his interview was that we, you have to be at that table to talk, but you have to be respectful about it. Otherwise, we're getting nowhere. And that's what this, again, that's what this commission's about is building community, but building it in a way that everyone understands everyone and can be respectful of it, and that we can all understand where we're all coming from.
Thank you, Joe. Christina, would you like to speak to your second?
I made it.
I made it.
Just barely.
Just barely. You can speak too. Um, David. It's, it's like I said, even in that room, um, I think you've brought a lot of stability, um. A lot of focus to a commission that really, really needed it. And one thing that really stood out to me today, I'm not going to repeat what Joe said because there's so much great stuff in that. But he doesn't just start. In the city and, and talks about how he's going to include other people, but he, he started it. Within the commission and actually spoke up for how some people are feeling and whether that's positive or negative, but already, um. Start, starting from within, from within the commission. So I really, um, I respect that. And I think that speaks of his character and, um, he, he is the commission, like. You feel it, you know? He, he's just, he's so well-rounded. His definition of diversity is such a wide scope. It's not one, two, or even five things. There's, it's so colorful. And it's not just colorful. Talk to that in a quarter, but, um, I welcome you back and I think we are honored to have, to have you on the council. Or on the commission.
Thank you, Christina. Is there anybody else wishing to speak for Jennifer?
What really stands out to me about David is he always drops a little nugget for council to think about. And I really like people to, to challenge our ways of thinking. That's, um, important. And tonight it was to remind the council to show vocal and public support of this commission. So if you haven't made yourself a little reminder, spread the love. I, this is how I remind myself to do things because I get tired at night, um. On your Facebook post or whatever, talk it up, let people know about the commission and, um, council's support of it. Uh, thank you, um, for always tactfully and gracefully. And with respect, reminding us of our jobs as elected.
Thank you, Jennifer. Is there anybody else wishing to speak for or against the motion? It's been moved and seconded to appoint David Scalabrini to fill position number eight on the Equity Cultural and Social Justice Commission. With a term expiring September thirtieth, two thousand twenty five. All those in favor state I. Any opposed? Congratulations, David. New business item number two is consider appointment to the youth council. Does council wish to take actions? Beth?
Second. I, I moved to appoint, uh, Isaac Valdez.
Arredondo.
Arredondo, sorry, I didn't have it for me. To fill position number eight on the youth council with a term expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty six.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to appoint Isaac Valdez Arredondo to fill position number eight. Beth, would you like to speak to your motion?
I, I just, he, he mentioned he's lived here all his life, you know? And he wants, uh, it was interesting. He, he made a comment about, hmm, I see something that I feel like. Could, could be in, do for a change and then wanting to get involved. And, um, he has an interesting perspective on, you know, what is important to youth, particularly teens. Uh, we, we've heard this before, but it is interesting to still continue hearing. How there's stuff for adults and there's stuff for the young kids, but the teens are kind of that missing. Like what are the activities? You know, the summers are great at the park because there's stuff to do, but not always all year long. And so, um, this came with some thoughtfulness of what they might be able to start working on or continue working on. Um, to have a well-rounded community for all age groups.
Thank you, Beth. Jennifer, would you like to speak to your second?
Yes, um, Isaac seems, uh, really excited to get involved with this community. And, um, finds this role really interesting. It was great to hear that he heard about it from the school email. Just saying that for city staff to hear as, uh, we're looking to, to recruit folks that either kids or their parents. I don't think my kids ever read those, um, high school emails, but I did. Um, and, uh, he really repeatedly mentioned, uh, bringing in more opportunities for events. For the older kids, kids his age, and I, I think the youth council's a, a great way to, to bring that input.
Thank you, Jennifer. Is there anybody else wishing to speak for or against the motion? Been moved and seconded to appoint Isaac Valdez Arredondo to fill position number eight on the youth council with a term expiring. June thirtieth, two thousand twenty six. All those in favor state I. Any opposed? Congratulations, Isaac. Next up is new business item number three, discuss the proposed two thousand twenty four legislative priorities and policies. Regan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the two thousand twenty four safety session is the second year of the two-year biennium. It's scheduled to be a sixty day, the short session that we call it. And the, the main objective during that session is for the legislature to adopt the supplemental budget. Which means there are significantly less opportunities for funding requests, uh, during this session. So with that in mind, we've created the, these legislative priorities that are before you and our policy documents. So I'll quickly go through those and then, uh, seek any council input on that as we move forward. First is under transportation. Uh, we'll discuss a little bit later in our council meeting agenda. About, uh, some need for additional funding for our five sixteen project and the, uh, tune of around a million dollars. So this is, uh, this is something we felt like we should request. This is a state route. And the city's already put around six million dollars of our own funds into that project. And we believe we need around a million dollars to get this across the finish line. So we'll be asking the state to, uh, fill in that gap of funding for that project. Next is the widening and safety improvements for state route, uh, eighteen. As you know, we were awarded six hundred and forty million dollars for that, for the widening of the stretch that we were working on. Last year, the governor, uh, put in his priority funding and pushed this project out about seven, eight, nine years. We were able to work with legislators and get it moved up. Uh, it's looking like we're going to have to play defense again this legislative session. A lot of projects are coming in. Um, underfunded, uh, and four oh five is a priority and it's going to take money from other projects. And so, uh, our efforts this session, uh, in part will be to keep the money and the timing. For that project in place. Next is under maintenance and preservation. And, uh, to urge the legislature to identify a sustainable, ongoing funding source that supports existing. Transportation infrastructure and meets the unique, uh, needs of the communities around the state. They have been able to come up with ways to fund, uh, plethora of other things, but we haven't really been given a great tool. For, uh, tra- maintenance and preservation of transportation. We did get the point zero one percent TBD. Uh, the, the council adopted, but, uh, that does not meet anywhere near the needs that, that we have. Any questions on transportation before I move on to the next item? Yeah, Jennifer?
The, uh, five sixteen funding shortfall, being that it would be retroactive. Do you think that would lessen the legislature's. Willingness to reimburse?
Yes, it's a good question. Um, Don will speak to this a little bit more when that, um, item comes up in, in a couple of agenda items here. But, uh, what we're asking the council tonight is to authorize, uh, spending that much on the project. But we don't anticipate having to spend that last million dollars until next year. So, uh, we'll be able to request it before that money's spent.
Okay.
Uh, is that right, Don?
Yeah.
Don, there you are. You're not up there.
That was great, by the way.
Does that answer your question?
It does, thank you.
Yeah, you bet. So on affordable housing, um, the legislature passed House Bill twelve twenty. Which, uh, gave us several requirements and different affordable housing allocations. The problem is they didn't provide guidance in how those allocations are to be met and credited to cities. So we've got the Department of Commerce, we've got the Puget Sound Regional Council, and we have King County. All requiring different metrics for us to try to meet, uh, which is really ridiculous. And so, uh, what we're, um, working on with this item is to have them, uh, unify. And provide guidance on how, um, how those metrics provided in, in House Bill twelve twenty can be met. Specifically, uh, a, a unique situation that Covington's in. Because we, um, adopted, um, legislation soon enough to get the, the House Bill fifteen ninety funds. Where most all of our other neighboring cities that just reverted to King County. Um, we're in a unique situation where we're receiving those dollars for affordable housing construction. And we don't have our own housing authority. So how do we get affordable housing credits for contributing to a regional housing authority? And that's just not provided in House Bill twelve twenty. So we're asking for clarification around that. We're being assured we'll get credits for that, but nobody knows how to do it or who's going to come up with the way to do it. So, um, uh, that's what, what that bill is around. We, we had it, um. Stated a little differently that you'll actually see in the policy document that, that we'll take out of that. And we made it a little more broad to encompass more than just the housing credits. Uh, anything on, uh, the affordable housing section? Okay, so expanding, uh, planning deadlines, this one, uh, a lot of, uh, land use and planning bills were passed. And they all had deadlines to be completed around twenty twenty five. Which means all the cities in the state are fighting for the same resources, consultants and whatnot to help. Uh, work on those, um, mandates from the state. So, uh, it's just not going to be able to happen within the timeline that the legislature set. So this is to ask for, uh, an extension of those deadlines. The work is going to get done, but it just can't get done because you've created a situation where we're all after very limited resources. So that's, uh, that's what that, uh, agenda item is. Next is on capital funding. Uh, not much, uh, description there, but just the Jenkins Creek Trail, that was something that we had in last year's. Uh, legislative priorities as well. We were requesting two million dollars to make that connection from Founder's Park. To, uh, Jenkins Creek Park. Uh, we received two hundred and fifty thousand, which was helpful, but, um, not going to get the job done. So, uh, we thought we'd go back and, and try it out again and, and see where we, where it shakes out. And then with public safety, um, just to request that the legislature, um. That they help us provide ways to have, uh, sources for funding. And we'll talk a little bit more about that as, as we dive into the budget later tonight. But, uh, we need opportunities and ways to fund public safety. And we need the state to, to provide those for our local jurisdictions. So those are the priority items that we've put together. Any, um, comments, suggestions, uh, from the council on those?
Well, I mean, just a quick, maybe it'll be a little more clear in the next document that Bruce. But when you were saying Covington here, Covington requests further investment from the legislator, legislature. But then I'm hearing you say it's not just about them, like, helping to fund it. It's also about them creating policies so that we can collect more revenues or find different ways to fund it within our city.
Absolutely.
Which still puts the burden back down on our residents, right? I mean, are we looking at both ways, I would imagine?
Yeah, it, it is both ways. Um, there, there is one way to do it right, right now through sales tax, the public safety sales tax. But, um, how that law was written when it was adopted, uh, is it fifteen percent? Fifteen percent goes off the top to the county, uh, and so that just doesn't make sense. And there's got to be a better way for us to fund, um, public safety in our local jurisdictions.
Thank you.
Yep. Anything else? Okay, I will move on to our policy document. I'll go through that a bit quicker, um. A lot of these are carryovers from last year, so I'll just touch on the new items that I've added to our policy document. And the first one is insurance costs. Those have been, um, going up exponentially. In fact, our liability rates have increased by fifty percent. And, um, and then in twenty twenty two and then in twenty twenty three by another sixty one percent. So just huge, uh, increases and we're joining with A W C and W CIA. In requesting that the legislature protect against liability expansion. And new policies that would drive additional claims and increase our litigation costs. Something has to be done to rein in, um, those increases. Next is on audits. As you know, that was one of our priorities. Last year, we ran up against several brick walls. Uh, namely legislators that were the legislators we needed to get to committee wouldn't hear it. Um, uh, because, um, of their relationships with the auditor's office. So, uh, however, there are a couple of, uh, legislators who heard about what we were doing. They're not in our district, uh, but, uh, they have reached out and may want to pursue something this year. So we put it on our policy document in case that gains any feat, um, or any momentum. And, um, we'll work on it at that point if it does. So the next one is land use planning and, uh, that should have been deleted. Uh, as I mentioned, we changed the wording of that and broadened what we were asking and put it on to our priorities. So we'll remove that from our policy document. All the other items on the policy document were, uh, carryovers from last year's legislative session. So if the council has any changes or edits, like May, we can discuss those now. Otherwise, we'll bring this back for final adoption in the next meeting.
Council have any comments or changes, Beth?
I know this is probably a really long shot, but I think when it comes to the property tax, um. Man, I don't want to sound like I'm trying to like cut, cut city, the city budget off, but, but. When it comes to assessing somebody's tax based on the value of their home, a value they're never, they're only going to recognize when they sell their property. If they want to stay and live here for, for decades, you know, they're, they're continuing to see their costs go up as well as, as does the city and everything. Is there an opportunity to present something to legislate, the legislators? That caps or maybe kicks back some of the money that like the county gets or so forth? Because we know that a lot of property tax goes to not city. I mean, we don't, we only get a small fraction.
Yeah, about fifty two percent is to the school district and we, we get it just a fraction.
Right. I mean, is there anything talk about trying to figure out ways to keep more of that money here? So we don't have to raise it as much because we have more to work with.
I, I've not been involved in those discussions primarily because the school districts and the counties would, um.
Probably went out?
Yeah.
Okay, absolutely. All right.
So, anybody else? Just briefly, and I'll cover more on this during our, um. Our council staff comments, but I met with A W C today and they have that on their document also. To, um, ask for a one percent. To remove the one percent gap and have it increase with inflation with a three percent cap. And if we remember, what was it, twenty years ago, it had a six percent cap? So that's just coming, because right now, one percent isn't keeping up with inflation. As we know with, obviously with insurance and everything else that's going on and, um, with the police. Funding jail costs and everything else, uh, that's not helping. So A W C has got that on their, um, list as well. So does council, um, have any other changes or direction or do we want to? Move forward with, uh, Regan, move forward with this, bring back to council for a vote in, uh, two weeks. Okay, bring it back in two weeks.
You got it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I expect it to look pretty or not. I'm just a white piece of paper.
What's that?
I expect it to look pretty though, when you bring it back to us.
Yeah, well, it will eventually. It may not by next council meeting though. Because, uh, Carla's going to be gone and has a lot going on before that. So it, it will before we give it to our, our legislators, but, um, but it, it may or may not by the next council meeting.
All right, I'll let it slide then.
Next up is new business item number four, city manager presents the two thousand twenty four budget message. Regan?
Thank you. Before I get into that, I, I will say to Joe's comment, uh, we do constantly get the, the comment that ours is the best looking. So, so that's good. Well, council, I am pleased to present to you, uh, our two thousand twenty four, uh, budget, uh, this year. This is obviously, as you know, an extremely important document. It drives everything that we do in the upcoming year. Uh, this budget strives to accomplish ensuring the continued financial health of our city and addressing public safety challenges. With an emphasis on increased contract costs, jail, court, prosecution, and increased public defense costs. Although the council's continued sound fiscal management over the years has allowed the city to build healthy reserve and fund balances. However, cost increases coupled with very minor additional revenue sources are beginning to erode those balances. With at least modest, uh, modest recession likely looming. With at least modest modest recession likely looming, this budget serves to stabilize and support our core services with the understanding that a significant expansion of services will be difficult to support in future years as current expenditures continue to exceed current revenues. The estimates presented reflect a conservative approach in both revenue and expenditure projections. While while financial indicators remain fixed, the cost of doing business in some areas has increased significantly, as we just talked about. In response to these effects, and as part of the upcoming budget workshop, the city will continue discussions regarding new revenue sources. I've also asked all the directors to look at what could be cut from our expenses in order to help balance our budget. At our budget workshop, we'll review all those options. So in reviewing the forecast, the general fund is deficit spending. One of the main contributors is the increase to our King County Sheriff's contract, which has increased one point four seven million dollars between twenty twenty three and twenty twenty four. The street fund continues to struggle and would be unsustainable if not for the general fund subsidy. The development services fund, which is also deficit spending, has continued to see a slowdown in single family building permits in twenty twenty three and is projected to remain relatively flat in twenty twenty four. The budget strategies this year were to stabilize and support our core services. This is a little different than in prior years, and so you'll see as we go through decision cards that reflected. Next was to increase public safety investment due to rising contract costs, fund infrastructure improvements, and fund equipment needs. So now briefly go through each fund. First is the general fund. For twenty twenty four, we're forecasting a seventeen point six percent total decrease in revenues. That is in large part due to the the ARPA funds that we had been receiving that we will no longer have. So that's why it's a pretty steep decrease in our projected revenues. Base budget, base budget expenditures are at seven point five percent or one point three million dollars higher than estimated actuals in twenty twenty three. This is due in part to an increase in the police contract, as well as increases in other public safety costs like the court, prosecution, public defense, and jail. There's also a cola of four point six percent included in that. For twenty twenty four, I'm recommending nine decision cards totaling three hundred and ninety thousand dollars. The fleet vehicle funding and variable message board decision cards are being funded out of the special projects reserve. That makes up about a hundred sixty one thousand of that three hundred ninety. And that special projects reserve is what you'll call when we use ARPA funds to spend other where we put that reserve in special projects. So that's the remaining balance of what we have in that special projects reserve. In the street fund, there will be a full year of collections in the amount of six hundred and seventy two thousand dollars from our T B D sales tax. And the remaining major revenues, franchise fees, vehicle license fees, and fuel taxes are forecasted to remain flat. For twenty twenty four, I'm recommending three decision cards with a total cost of eighty five thousand dollars. The fleet vehicle funding and variable message board are being funded by a transfer from the general fund special projects reserve, like I just discussed, and the and a vehicle reserve fund and the general fund transfer. So the remaining administrative assistant card is being funded from a general fund transfer. And therefore, it's showing it, everything kind of balances out and shows zero for decisions cards. Because in order to fund those in the street fund, we had to transfer everything, all the dollar amounts in to that fund in order to fund those requests. In development services for twenty twenty four, staff is forecasting fourteen point seven percent decrease in revenue over twenty twenty three estimates. I'm recommending one decision card totaling thirty eight thousand dollars, and that's for a portion of an administrative assistant. Public Works Development Services and Finance will share that administrative assistant. In surface water management or SWIM, the revenues are showing a minor increase of point eight percent. And this is due to this being the final year of adopted rate increases that the council adopted several years ago. Staff anticipates needing to bring a new drainage utility rate starting to council in twenty twenty four for your consideration. In twenty twenty four, I'm recommending two decision cards totaling just over forty thousand dollars in our SWIM fund. Next to equipment replacement fund for twenty twenty four, I'm recommending one decision card that has been approved in all the above funds. So in summary, you can see that this is a much leaner budget than we've had in prior years. And as I mentioned earlier, the goal of this budget is to maintain city services at current service levels, continue to invest in capital improvement projects, fund competitive salary for personnel, and provide options to manage the cost increases that we're experiencing. So I'm happy to take any questions on that. But before, I'd just really like to thank our staff. You you know, we have just an incredible team and budget cycles in other organizations can be quite difficult when everybody's fighting for whatever funds are available. But it's just not that way here. Everybody is willing to do what has to be done for the organization, and that is incredibly refreshing and and quite wonderful. I want to thank Casey and her team, too. They're extraordinary and just wonderful. She really is amazing and her entire team, and I really want to thank council. You've just been incredibly supportive of being fiscally conservative in our budgeting, and that has carried us well, and I think we'll continue, yeah, pat yourself on the back. And we'll continue to do so. As you know, when when things were going well, we created all these reserve funds to try to fund our our major priorities. And those have done really, really well for us over the last several years as revenues have have decreased. And so this year, we need to tighten our belt a bit and just prepare for what could be twenty twenty five and even more difficult financial year. So with that, I'm happy to address any questions. But as you know, at the budget workshop, we will have a lot of time to deliberate on all of this and get into the weeds a little bit more.
Council have any questions for tonight? Make sure you have any questions, bring them to our budget workshop on the twenty eighth.
You got it.
Thank you, Regan.
Thank you.
Next is new business item number five. Authorize the city manager to increase the contract maximum for State Route five sixteen Jenkins Creek to one eighty fifth place project C I P one one two seven. Bob, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. In the spirit of not fighting for funding, we're coming to ask for a contract maximum increase of the five sixteen and the hundred and eighty fifth to Jenkins Creek project. As per the blue sheet, council authorized the original award with around a five percent contingency, which was about eight hundred thousand. In January, we asked for another eight hundred and seventy five thousand in contingency, and today we are asking seven hundred thousand for the construction contract. This is our newly projected price to to close out the project in the fall of twenty twenty four. If this is approved tonight, that would be a total cost increase of our construction contract of twelve point six percent, higher than the original bid. Similarly, with our construction management contract, we've had cost increases as well with additional design and additional days factored in for W S P. This supplement keeps W S P onboard through the closing of the project. The total increase of this supplement is three hundred and sixty eight thousand nine hundred and thirty nine dollars. This constitutes thirteen point two overall increase in the construction management costs. As the project continues to progress, change order and bid item overruns have occurred. Some of the change orders have include traffic signal communication revision, significant stormwater redesign, temporary pavement markings, additional asphalt, and the need for more temporary concrete barrier for the elevated road section. There are also future change orders in the pipeline that will include additional defishing of an additional wetland, additional square footage of retainer walls, and redesign of the stormwater swell near the Novo Apartments. As a note of clarification, we are requesting one million seventy thousand dollars tonight. Please let me know if you have any questions, and thank you for considering this.
Does council have any questions for Bob? Does council? Before us, we have a potential motion to authorize the city manager to utilize one million seventy thousand dollars from the reserve funds for cost increases to State Route five sixteen Jenkins Creek to one hundred and eighty fifth place project, which increases budget authorization to twenty one million two hundred thousand eight hundred and thirty five dollars for construction and budget authorization for construction management services of three million one hundred and eighty seven thousand seven hundred and seventy three, and authorizing the city manager to execute change orders up to the construction budget authorization and such additional minor changes to agreements as necessary to successfully complete the project.
So moved?
Second.
It's been moved in second. If Beth, would you like to speak to your motion?
I mean, well, first of all, thank you very, very much. This is very easy to read and figure out exactly what the what the ask is. And again, I mean, getting back to what Regan said about having those reserve funds and being able to look creative ways of using what we have and potentially trying to find additional funding from the state. It it's a project we want to see finished, and it needs to get done. And if we don't do this, then we're going to be kind of stuck in the mud. So yeah, appreciate all the effort that went into it.
Thank you, Beth. Joe, would you like to speak to your second?
If we don't give them the money, we don't get this road finished. And I know a lot of people, me included, are looking forward to this road being finished, so. And we're not, and I just think we didn't get it done.
Is there anybody else who should speak for or against the motion?
Mayor?
Yes.
Be- before you you go to a a vote, would council like to decide which reserve fund or multiple reserve funds to pull this from? Or would you like staff to do that? Just if you'd like to just make it part of the motion.
It would be helpful for staff to make recommendations, and then maybe at the budget meeting, we can quickly. We can always move it around later.
Yeah, yeah, we can. So, yeah, but if if there was some clarify clarity to it in the motion, that would be helpful, I think.
I think that if I can rephrase it, then to utilize one million seventy thousand from the reserve funds as presented by staff.
Okay.
Will that work?
Yeah, that's working.
Okay. All right, it's been moved in second. First off, Bob, thank you very much, and Don, thank you for bringing this forward. Been moved in second to authorize the city manager to utilize one million seventy thousand from the reserve funds as presented by staff for cost increases to State Route five sixteen Jenkins Creek to one hundred and eighty fifth place project, which increases budget authorization of twenty one million two hundred thousand eight hundred and thirty five dollars for construction and budget authorization for construction management services of three million one hundred eighty seven thousand seven hundred and seventy three dollars, and authorizing the city manager to execute change orders up to the construction budget authorization and such additional minor changes to agreements as necessary to successfully complete the project. All those in favor stayed eye? Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you. Hopefully, I won't be back.
Thank you. All right, that concludes our new business tonight. Looking at future agenda items, we have our meeting on October twenty fourth. We have a interview right now scheduled at five forty, a joint session at six with the Parks and Recreation Commission and our council meeting starting at seven. Does council have anything that they would like to see on a future agenda?
The mayor? Yeah, not so much for this next one, but I, given the public comment that we got tonight, I'd love to see something on our future agenda to discuss our process related to code enforcement and how and where we can improve and expedite that process. So this agenda is, we won't get out till ten o'clock, it looks like on that one, but on an upcoming one. So I'd like to have that.
Selena's camera's not on, but I'm seeing her smile because we've talked about this primarily because of a lot of the issues that you've raised, which are absolutely valid. And so we we have that as part of our summit in January. If council wants it sooner, we could try to put it in, but it's really, it needs, I think, more time than. Oh, sorry, it's a study session. Sorry, we do have a study session November twenty eighth.
Great.
November twenty eighth, yeah.
So perfect.
See?
Yeah.
All right, anybody else? All right, we'll move into council staff comments. Chief?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Today, we learned we're getting our detective on October twenty eighth.
Oh, great.
So a little over two weeks, he'll be starting then next week. I think twenty, it's actually September or Saturday, so he'll start on Monday or Tuesday, and we'll be working him. He's going to be doing more of the retail business side of detective work, which will free up our other one to do more residential stuff. He's going to be leading some stuff in the organized retail theft. We're trying to find some ways where we can actually be more proactive. We make an arrest, and then we can search the entirety of the state database to see if there's a way to aggregate the thefts to make a felony. So that way we'll get the message that we don't appreciate that here. That's it for me.
Thank you, sir. Don?
Thanks, Mayor and Council. Just one thing, if you haven't heard or didn't notice, the Wash Dot did make the operational changes to the signal out here in one sixty eighth and at one seventy second. So just wanted to make sure that you guys were aware of that.
Thank you. Let's see, Ethan's not online, so Selena? You're on mute.
Okay, there we go. Hi, good evening, council. Nothing for me tonight, other than just reminding you that the Planning Commission is holding their open house next Thursday. This is related to the comprehensive plan update that we are deeply into this year. We're going to be focusing on kind of the housing mandates that are coming down from us that Regan kind of mentioned during the legislative updates. We'll be doing some info for our community on that. And then we're also going to be talking about climate inequity, which are also the other kind of two big topics that the state is having us work through in this comprehensive plan of date. So feel free to tell folks within your circle to join us either online or in person. Thank you.
Thank you, Selena. Casey?
Thank you. Good evening. Just a quick update on the business national tax analysis that we've been working on. We've been kind of stalled a little bit, waiting for Department of Revenue to give us a tax sharing agreement so we can get a little bit more detailed information on the businesses in town. We just received that finally today. It only took four months, but we got it. So that will be on the next agenda for you guys to approve, but we have been warned that it could take about two months for them to run everything for us. So as soon as we get that, we'll be able to start doing some more analysis and get that information to you guys, probably in the form of a study session, hopefully in January. That's it. Thank you.
Thanks, Casey. Mark?
There's no executive session tonight, and I have no further report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Regan?
Nothing more for me. Thank you, man.
Thank you, Regan. Krista?
As you know, council typically cancels the second meeting in December, so I would like to request council consensus to cancel the December twenty sixth council meeting.
I don't know. Certain consensus, there is.
There's four, at least four.
Thank you. That's all for me tonight.
Thank you, Krista. Christina?
Oh. We're going to be meeting with Skip next week. And hopefully get some, lately, we've been getting a lot of good information about what's going on, not just within our cities, but legislatively across the state. So looking forward to that, and nothing else for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Beth?
A couple of things. Speaking of organized retail crime, I know the Seattle Metropolitan Chamber is hosting a one hour Zoom meeting in November. I've signed up for that, so it'll be interesting to see if there's any additional information that might be helpful, or just at least gain insight on where things are right now. I've got a retail career, so I know this has been a thing since forever, but it certainly is changing with the landscape, so. Also, I'm on the Joint Recommendations Committee, which for Sound Cities Association, and we work with King County to determine allocations of community development block grant funds. We have two more meetings left for this year. One of the items, one of the grant applications is the Minor Home Repair, which we're a part of. And as soon as we get the final, we don't know exactly what's going to happen until. you know, we don't know exactly what's going to happen until every, you know, the year, year end, but I'll certainly get back a report on that and whether we're going to be, um, whether that grant application gets approved, so. Um, Fun Day at Makers Market, we got there late because Mike and I were doing a ten K run up in the hills and it took forever, but uh, went with my mother and my mother-in-law. It was a lot of fun, um, getting an opportunity to check out the booths. Um, and then, of course, Purple Light Night was a few weeks ago, um, great collaboration by the city. Um, individuals, um, that don't live in the city helped out. We had Rotary, we had vendors, Fred Meyer, so hopefully that tradition can, uh, which started in Covington can continue to be kept alive by people that want to get behind it and make that work and grow, so. And that was it. Thanks.
Thanks, Beth. Sean?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one thing, uh, tomorrow, King County will be holding a stakeholder meeting related to their battery energy storage system ordinance. Um, uh, I believe Selena will be attending. Uh, I will be attending as well. Um, they're just looking for feedback, um, from local communities, uh, fire departments, uh, others on what should be in their, um, final ordinance, so. Um, I'll report back when I know more. So, that's it.
Thanks, Sean. Jennifer?
I don't think I have anything tonight. Thank you.
Thanks, Jennifer. Joe?
Um, so get to do pick in person tomorrow, so I get to make that fun drive down to Renton. There is a pre-pick meeting, uh, starting at six. I will not be attending the pre-pick meeting. I have, uh, want to spend some time with the kids because I've barely seen them this week, so I, but I will be at pick. Uh, there are a couple of big things going on. Uh, we will be having a discussion on King County Cultural Access Sales Tax, uh, King County Open Doors. County Council is talking about adding one tenth of one percent tax, uh, sales tax for, uh, for different programs. They had this and now, of course, talking about, so don't anymore. Uh, County Council is considering also to implement a councilmatic one tenth of one percent sales tax to support cultural access through the King County Open Doors program. If adopted, the proposal, uh, increase local public funding support for cultural access programs operated by local nonprofit organizations and in public schools. Um, that is something that's going to be talked about. There's no county council and the, um, Regional Policy Committee won't be talking about it until, for about another month or so, but this will give us some idea, and I can report back our next meeting, what's going on more with it. And then, uh, I don't know if any of you have seen the email, because I know there's at least one out there, but regional boards and committees with SCA, um, with the way my life is going to be going next year, I'm probably going to be cutting back on some of my regional commitments for at least next year. Um, so, but I'll, I'll, I'll know better in a couple of weeks, but if you want to serve on any of the SCA boards, get your applications in. Um, if you don't want to serve on them, don't worry about it. Don't, don't get your application soon. That's fine. We'll find someone. But, uh, just, uh, just know that there's a bunch out there, and if you have questions about which ones there are, uh, go to the SCA website and they'll have some info for that. Uh, other than that, I am on a week vacation from school myself, so it's kind of nice. No, not worrying about any homework, uh, but I've got two more classes before I start student teaching, so. Yay. Going to go grayer, I think. It's, it's fun. Uh, other than that, I have nothing else. Everyone have a good week.
Thank you, Joe. Um, first off, thank you for the public comment, and thank you for continuing to provide public comment. I know that some people feel that they don't get heard. It takes time. Um, government runs slow, unfortunately, um, because of everything that goes on, but and for both you, Dan and Brianna, and everybody, um, that's online or looks at this recording, please continue to either provide public comment at the dais, online, or even sending emails. Our contact information as council members is on our website. Please reach out to us. We do want to hear what's going on, because if we don't know something's broken or wrong, we can't help. And staff, if they don't know, we, we do listen. We just want to get it done. So, thank you. Um, Joe, thank you for bringing up the SCA boards. Uh, Don, Bob? Two fifty six looks great. I love the new reconfiguration at the intersection. The striping looks great. Uh, it was a long time coming, but that road is wonderful. I travel it, I don't know, four, six times a day, and it's very nice, especially that intersection. So, thank you. Uh, I met with, uh, the South End Mayors today for lunch with AWC, and we discussed some of the new AWC priorities, which align with our priorities here at the city. And, uh, with it being a short session, all we need to do is just keep talking to our representatives and legislators to try and get our priorities done. Even if they don't get done this year, we need to keep planting seeds to get it done in the next several years. Makers Market, Beth, I agree. It was wonderful. Um, I was there for the first hour, and, uh, my girls enjoyed it, and being able to get up there on the stage and welcome everybody, and I went through and personally thanked each of the vendors for being there again and, uh, seeing all their great crafts that they had. And Purple Light Nights. Um, when I spoke, thank you for allowing me to do the countdown and speaking, but I realized I didn't thank all the sponsors when I started. Um, so I know that, um, Bikers Against Child Abuse were there. Thank you to the Rotary Club for continuing to push this and make sure that Purple Light Nights and domestic violence awareness continues to be brought forward. Puget Sound Regional Fire Authority, Fred Meyer, Glow Tea.
Mm-hmm.
Um, my youngest would definitely love that. And, uh, who am I missing?
Vine Maple Place.
Vine Maple Place, uh, was one of the sponsors as well.
And Crumble donated the Crumble Cookies.
Oh, Crumble Cookies. Yes, those were extremely good. So, um, if you could please pass on to Rotary and everybody, thank you for continuing the vision that Victoria Throm had. That is all I have. Um, this is, uh, now we move into our second opportunity for public comment. Speakers will state their name, address, and organization. Comments are directed to the city council, not the audience or staff. Comments are not intended for conversation or debate and are limited to no more than four minutes per speaker. For attendees participating virtually, click the raise hand button in Zoom. For attendees participating by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand. Once the city grants you permission to speak, press unmute if participating virtually, or dial star six to unmute if participating by phone. Notice to all participants pursuant to state law RCW forty two dot one seven eight dot five five five, campaigning for any ballot measure or candidate in City Hall and or during any portion of the city ca- uh, of the council meeting, including the audience comment portion of the meeting is prohibited. Is there anybody in the audience wishing to address council this evening? Is there anybody online wishing to address council? That concludes our public comment period. Uh, one other thing that I would like to state before we conclude our meeting is that, uh, we're always looking for partners and commission members, people who would like to work, um, and help drive the vision of the city. So anybody that is interested in joining the a commission, uh, Equity Cultural and Social Justice Commission, our youth council, arts, planning, uh, any of the commissions, please look online at our Covington City, City of Covington website, and, um, please apply or reach out to any of our council members or staff. There is no executive session, and with that, our meeting is adjourned for tonight. Thank you all very much.